We've got the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I think. Oh. Okay, that's not who I had on my list, but you're welcome. So yeah, just let us know who you are and what church you're here from, and we'll everybody rise, and then we'll stay standing for the pledge.
I'm Michael Leary. Michael Leary from the Church of Jesus Christ and Latter-day Saints.
Thank you, Mike.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet here in this Casa Grande City Council meeting. We're thankful for our blessings in our life of our homes, our family, food, we have to eat, air to breathe, and for watching over us and guiding us. And we invite Thy Spirit to be here in this meeting, to guide the members, to guide those who want to speak, that they can explain themselves, and that we'll be open to understand what they have to say, and be able to come to resolutions to the concerns that are brought up. We love Thee and thank Thee for all Thou does for us, and pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. It just didn't look like Mike McEwen to me, or not Scott McEwen. Your hair isn't as gray as his. Thank you. Thank you for the invocation. Thank you, Bob. All right, let the roll call show that all council members are present.
So noted.
Minutes.
Mayor McFarland, with minutes today, we want to move approval for the City Council regular meeting minutes on July 19th, 2021, and accept for the record the minutes from the Casa Grande Personnel Retirement Board from June 3rd as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next item is item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated July 14th through July 27th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right. Claims are approved. Meeting agenda. Larry, any changes from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Council members, anyone? All right, seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as presented. We do have a special presentation tonight. We have a swearing in of one of our officers, Jesus Rodriguez. Jesus, you want to come forward, and I think our city clerk will administer the oath. Congratulations, by the way.
Please raise your hand. I'm speaking.
I'm speaking.
Do you tell him to swear?
Do you tell him to swear?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona. And that I will bear due faith.
And I will bear due faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And that I will give all allegiance.
And that I will give all allegiance.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
Discharge the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard, and congratulations again. Can I drive a white F-150 Ford? Just kidding, just kidding. All right, next on our agenda is item G, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to remove one of the consent agenda items? Mr. Powell?
I am going to not speak to G-10, which is the Santan Auto Partners with the Ford pickup, and my brother-in-law is highly in the company. His brother is the owner, so it's better for me to just.
You want to just abstain?
Just abstain, please.
I think we need to remove it, because otherwise, because we're voting in one.
All right, so we'll remove G-10, and we'll consider it in its normal sequence then. Okay. All right. Anyone else have anything else? Anyone from the audience, public?
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
With the removal of G-10.
Oh, I'm sorry, with the removal of G-10. I apologize.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, then, the next item on the agenda is G-10. That's considering the approval of resolution number 5327. Do we have any comments on it, or? Nobody from the Police Department here to talk about it? Oh, sorry.
I apologize about that, Mayor. I wasn't sure what the protocol was once that was pulled.
No, you're up. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
No problem.
The Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase one 2022 Ford F-250 pickup truck with a truck bed outfit from Santan Ford. The vehicle will replace an aging police technician vehicle that's been in the fleet for about 20 years. That vehicle is antiquated, and after discussing with staff, it was determined that a Ford F-250 would fit the bill for the job functions. We looked at different options and different varieties of vehicles and concluded that the F-250 is what we needed. And with that, I would take any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I had nothing against it. I just abstained because.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, then, seeing no other comments or questions, then I'll call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5327, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, for the purchase of a 2022 Ford F-250 pickup truck, authorizing expenditure or public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5327 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell abstaining. Mayor Protam Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move into the next item on our agenda, which is item H, which is public comments. This is where I'm going to open the floor and podium to anyone in the audience who would like to address the council. Just as a reminder, if you do come to the podium, please state your name and your address for us. And remember, you have three minutes, and that anything you bring up, the council cannot respond to. We can give staff direction to follow up and get back with you. So this is your opportunity. If, is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the City Council? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll close the public comments, and we'll move on to item I, I-1, considering approval of ordinance number 3287. Mr. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council award a contract for professional services to Sunrise Engineering for the final design and construction documents for the Quartzon Relief Sewer Project in an amount not to exceed $200,000. Currently, the existing sewer lines within Quartzon serve approximately 50% of our city, just under half of the total flows that go to our wastewater treatment facility. And this line obviously needs to be evaluated, and the relief sewer built to provide the needed sewer collection capacity that we need for not only the existing growth, but the growth that we've planned for here in the very near future, probably nearer than we want it to be. But we're excited to see all the development, and this is a key part of us being prepared to help manage that development growth in the city. We did a design concept report with Sunrise Engineering. They finished that in January of 2019. So this is the next step. We take the 30% design set, where the design concept report took the design, and we'll take that to final design with Sunrise Engineering, and they'll also prepare all the construction documents that we need to put this out on the street and get this bid and constructed for us. We, obviously, we're choosing to move forward with Sunrise Engineering. Because they've done this effort to this point, it makes economic sense to continue to move this project forward with this firm. So we did have adequate funds in this year's budget approved in our CIP, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, I just have one question, and it's in regards really to the general collection system that we have set up. Will this look at a wider area than just Quartzon? Is this going to kind of look at all the area also down Florence coming from the east?
What we're trying to do is, this is a key piece of our collection system. It's not going to solve all of the issues that we have with our collection system, but when we did the evaluation, we looked at running a new line down the wash, which basically would have intercepted everything from the north. We looked at upgrading the line in Cottonwood Lane, which basically would, you know, intercept anything coming from the south. And we looked at those two alternatives, along with the relief sewer in Quartzon Alignment itself. And when we did all the cost estimates of each of those different options, as well as the benefits from each of those options, we looked at Quartzon and said, this is where we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck, and it's going to have the most impact. Now, having said that, you're going to see additional projects in the coming months and in the following years, where we've identified through our system evaluation, those other choke points, or those areas where our capacity is pinched, where we just don't have enough for that next wave of growth. So you'll see those projects coming on board as well, but this is probably the most important one moving forward at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Powell?
The sewer line stopped at the interstate on Quartzon Road. Will it pick up and go on to the east? If we have need for it, I guess would be the question.
So this design will take it to the interstate, but it will not go under the interstate or east of that. That section of the sewer line has already been designed, and this interceptor will take that design into consideration and manage those flows as well. So it'll take all that into consideration, but that's a separate project from the end of the existing line today, east, to serve that side of the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no more comments or questions, then I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3287, an ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Sunrise Engineering, Inc., to provide the final design and construction documents for the Quartzon Relief Sewer Project, authorizing expenditure or public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the ordinance number 3287 as was presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to raise a point of personal privilege. I think that's really, our internet's not working. I don't know if anyone can fix that, so we can look at this. That's all. Mr. Powell's is working, but ours is, ours is not.
Are you saying I'm talking too much?
No, your packet. Your internet's working just fine.
All right. So the next item is item K on our agenda tonight's ordinances, resolutions on the matters subject to requiring action by the council, item K-1.
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, we're asking this evening that you consider approving a resolution that would approve a package of personnel policy amendments. Our personnel policy is the document that brings structure to our relationship with our employees and all of the important aspects of the employment relationship. The last time the policy was amended was 2018, and so there's some housekeeping things that need to be taken care of, as well as some other items. Back in May, on May the 17th, in study session, we discussed each of these areas with you and created a highlight sheet. And so instead of going over those individually, what I'd like to do is answer any questions that you might have, or address any concerns as we consider the package in its entirety this evening. So I'll stand to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Powell?
The only question I have is, have the employees been able to read this yet, or is this something that's going to be presented to them?
It'll be presented to them. The employees have not seen the amendments at this particular point in time. We also have, we've been working, I think, you know, we've been working on administrative directives, so we've had them for a very, very long time. And so Deputy City Manager has been leading that effort, and so we're, one at a time, beginning to do those. And as a matter of fact, two of the policies that are before you this evening, it's necessary to augment them with administrative directives to provide the details, specifically on the recording policy and on the drug and alcohol testing policy. So once council considers these, providing that you give your approval, then we will move to get information out to our employees through our departments and directly to our employees, make sure that there's an understanding of the elements here that impact them directly.
Go ahead, Lisa.
You know, and I think, of course, we've had discussion on many of these, and the one that bothers me the most, but I know we need, you know, to move forward, is the whole residency and, you know, with employees, and I know we have to be consistent across the board with all employees, but it just still, it just still bothers me a little bit, and I'm just hoping that, you know, I understand why we need to do this, change it to allow people to live outside of the City of Casa Grande, but I'm hoping, as we're continuing to recruit for various positions, that we can, and Brett, can we, you know, have, I mean, obviously not incentives, but can we, in whatever our application process is, put something in that if someone lives in Casa Grande, that we can maybe look at that person over someone else, or is that a discrimination thing, or?
Yeah, I think, you know, Mayor McFarland and Councilmember Fitzgibbons, I think the way the policy is written is going to allow Larry to sort of, you know, require it when he feels like it's sort of necessary, right? And that'll normally be with, like, department directors. I would certainly not recommend, you know, I think when we do hiring, like I just have, you know, I'm always going to be looking at somebody who's in Casa Grande favorably from a transportation standpoint, right, from a knowing the community standpoint, and I think most of our directors and most of our hiring people understand that. The way the policy is written does allow Larry to sort of require it in certain instances where we can, but, you know, we wouldn't want to necessarily do one that we take out a great candidate who doesn't leave here yet, but, you know, who very well may come to love in the community like the rest of us do.
Mayor McFarland, Councilmember Fitzgibbons and others, to that particular point, back in January of 2020, they decided to profile our employees from a residency perspective, and at that particular point in time, we actually had 456 individuals in our payroll system active. That included temporary, part-time, and full-time employees. And we audited that list to determine how many of those 456 individuals had Casa Grande addresses. We understand that not every Casa Grande address is in the city limits, but at least in it, on January 20th, 2021, I said 20, it was January 20th, 2021, a total of 320 of our 456 employees actually had Casa Grande addresses. And as you might guess, the next group were Arizona City and from there. So in looking at the actual statistics or the data, not that we can't always do better, but it's a pretty good representation, we think, in relationship to the residency policy at this point.
It's higher than most in the valley.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions for Scott? Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no more questions, then I will call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5329, a resolution of the mayor and council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the 2021 City of Casa Grande Personnel Policy Amendments to the City of Casa Grande Personnel Policy.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5329 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item K-2, which is considering approval of ordinance number 3288. I'm John. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor and council, staff recommends the adoption of an ordinance establishing the primary and secondary tax rates for the City of Casa Grande for fiscal '22. On July 6th, the mayor and council held a public hearing on the fiscal 2022 final budget and the primary and secondary tax levies contained in this action. Primary property taxes collected are used within the general fund for operational purposes, and secondary property taxes are utilized to pay voter-approved general obligation bond debt. Based upon current assessed valuations, the proposed primary property tax rate of $1.0148 will raise a tax levy of approximately $4,270,004, and a secondary rate of $0.0572 will raise a tax levy of approximately $2,297,380. It is the intent of the city that the property tax rates of $1.0148 and $0.0572 be adopted, and that if any adjustments are required to be made by the county, that they do so in the levy. Staff recommends that mayor and council adopt an ordinance establishing the primary and property secondary tax rates for the City of Casa Grande for fiscal year 2022. I will pause to entertain your questions.
Mr. Powell?
Are we discussing if we approve this at this point?
This is when we're discussing.
Okay.
What's in front of you.
Okay. I still have a problem with the secondary property taxes. It doubled from last year, and the people in our community are going to have to pay $1,188,581 in addition to what they normally have paid before. I don't think that's fair to our community and to the residents, so I can't support that, which you know.
And which we've discussed earlier, but I will entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Powell?
No, I just.
Matt?
Well, just, I think so people understand it, that this is a property tax rate that was voted on when we floated our bonds years ago, and it is actually lower than what we proposed in the bond language. And this is us paying our bills. I mean, we are, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes. I don't want to raise taxes. In a sense, though, we talked about this two years ago, when we had to lower the taxes due to state statute, because we were trying to save up our money in order to pay our bonds off earlier, to save money in the long run. However, the state didn't think that was such a good idea, so they made us reduce how much we kept in reserve to pay our bonds. So we spent that down over the last two years, and now we're at the point, which we talked about two years ago, that we're going to have to go back up. It's a little bit less than what we were charging before, so we kind of got a break for two years. And again, no one wants to raise taxes. It's not a good time to do it, but we have these obligations that we, as a city and as taxpayers, have voted on, and it's to pay for our rec center, our public safety building, our courthouse, you know, and so it's not like we're just raising.
Lindcola Center.
And the Lindcola, thank you. You know, and it's an obligation that we have to pay our bills. If we don't take this, then we're going to have to cut other areas of the budget out of our parks, or our police, or fire, or roads, or something else, in order to pay these bonds. And so, again, we discussed it two years ago, that we were going to have to go back to this rate that we have, and hopefully it'll go down in the future, because our assessed valuation is going up, whereas our payments stay the same. So I just want to explain that to people, that we're not just raising the tax rate for no reason, but we did have to drop it two years ago by a big, by a substantial amount. So now we're putting it back to where it was.
Mayor and council, not only did we have to drop the rates over the last two fiscal years, let me indicate here that included in the fiscal '22 budget is a budget transfer from the development impact fees to the secondary, to the bond obligation, debt service fees, to accommodate the shortfall that existed in fiscal year '21. So that further kind of diminished the burden that would have been placed on our residents had we not done a transfer. So I just want to make that clear, that we have gone through great lengths trying to make sure that we do not burden the residents as much as we could have, had we not chosen to make that transfer.
Lisa?
And I want to echo with Councilmember Herman. We were here two years ago, and we were concerned when we had to lower that rate, because we were forced to, and we had the opportunity. And Larry, and I appreciate you sending us the minutes, you know, that, you know, pretty much detailed all the discussion at that time. And Councilmember Powell and I were, and I think it was you, Matt, that were concerned, because we were going to raise the property tax, because we were lowering the secondary tax, and we didn't want to take the maximum level on the property tax, because we wanted to make sure that we are considerate of the taxpayers. So at that time, we were very cautious on what we did, and we chose to go with the lower primary tax rate. So we had that discussion, Councilmember Powell, and I totally understand your concern, but I, but we do, even though it looks like it's doubling, it's really lower than where it was before 2019. And so, in the end, and obviously, it's our obligation for the bonds and everything, so I'm with you in raising taxes, but this, I do feel, we knew this was coming, and unfortunately, you know, people don't remember, and it's just something that we have to do at this point, but I think we've been pretty conservative and cautious, and have been very considerate to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Powell?
Just in response, the, this money being moved around, the, this is looking like a really good year for construction, and we should be bringing in funding. The inflation is something that's already taking place, and a lot of people that have to pay us considerable much more for the property tax, and that's the house you live in, that's your property, and we have to pay the city for things that were done and not paid for. And I don't think that's fair to the people that live in our city. I don't think it's fair to the people that have to pay these taxes, and it's a big jump. As I say, it's a jump from last year for the amount that I read off, $1,188,800, or $581, that's a huge amount of money, and the citizens shouldn't have to pay that. The city should work on it and be responsible for it.
Any other comments? Any other comments? I have one comment from me. I echo Lisa and Matt's comments, and I think that we also need to remember that property tax for the city of Casa Grande is very small in terms of the total budget for this city. We are about 17% of the total property tax bill that's collected in all residents. So, again, the share that the city gets out of property tax that all of our citizens pay is a small amount. It's, like I said, it's 17% of your tax bill. So I just want to remind everybody of that. We don't really make 7%. Nope, I'm overstating it, sorry. I remember there's a seven in there. Thanks for correcting me. Okay, 7%, so I stand corrected. Like I said, it's a small amount. Most of it is schools and state and county, actually. So that's where most of your property tax goes. All right, no other questions or comments, then I will call for a ordinance number, please. Gloria?
Ordinance number 3288, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of property within the city of Casa Grande, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from fines, licenses, and other sources of revenue, providing funds for the various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing a general fund for general municipal expenses, all for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 3288 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
I think you know my position. I'm voting no. I don't think that the community should have to make up for the cities not having enough money to pay their bills. And I think that we're asking them to put a million-plus extra dollars into the coffers this year. I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair. I think that's a bad decision. So I vote no.
Mayor Protem Haddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item on our agenda is item L, which is public meetings and public hearings. So we'll start with L1, public hearing, and consider approval of ordinance number 1178.409. I like the jacket.
I got to get used to this one again, still. Let me see. There we go. All right. I'm not used to this clicker. We're usually sitting over there now. Rosa Constructions requesting a zone change from single-family residential R1 to multifamily residential R3 for approximately 8.86 acres of land located at 151 West O'Neill Drive. You can see the location there. It's south of O'Neill, in between Pinell and Casa Grande Avenue. Existing zoning, I said, was R1. Proposed zoning is going to R3. General plan category for it is neighborhoods. Little overview, the site is requested to be rezoned to create a multifamily apartment complex. Project aims to address the growing and unmet need for multifamily residences within a good infill site of the city. If the zone change is approved, all uses permitted are conditional. In the R3 zone district would be allowed and will be required to obtain approval of a major site plan and a conditional use permit if necessary. This is a good opportunity to provide workforce housing in an infill site near the city's core. So in looking at our review criteria, we look at the following criteria, that it's in conformance with the general plan. The action, first one is the actions consistent with the city's general plan, including the following goals, policies, and applicable elements. The area for the request is in the Phase 1, or the primary growth area of the city. The requested zoning of R3 or multifamily residential is an appropriate zoning district in the neighborhoods category. It does meet the following goal. Goal H2 is to encourage a variety in neighborhood design and development patterns. This is an area that is near manufactured home park, as well as single-family residential and commercial uses to the west. Policy H12 states that to promote the construction of new residential dwelling on vacant infill lots. The next criteria is a rezoning conformance to the general plan. If it proposes land uses density or intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. The neighborhoods category for this site allows density up to 20 units per acre on sites less than 10 acres. At 8.86 acres, the site could accommodate up to 177 dwelling units, depending on the unit size, number of bedrooms, number of stories, and infrastructure requirements. I don't think the applicant has that type of density in mind, but he is available tonight. And the third one, the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. First one is this zone change will allow the current owner to develop and utilize the property for a new multifamily apartment complex, a product type that the city has determined to need additional inventory of. And then the second portion of that is if the zone change is denied, the maximum density would be limited to five single-family homes due to the ADWR restrictions regarding cause or certificate of assured water supply.
So it has no water, per se?
Hmm?
It doesn't have?
No, it does not have cause.
Okay, thank you.
They could subdivide into a maximum of five parcels. So we did send out public notification, matter exceeded all city requirements. We did not receive comments in regards to this proposal. So Planning Commission on a 7-0 vote recommends city council approve the zone change request, DSA 2100088, from single-family residential R1 to multifamily residential R3 with the following conditions. That's the standard condition we put on in regards to right-of-way dedication, and they would be required to have some dedication to O'Neill, and I think Center Street as well. Can I answer any questions? Easy.
Where, is this the big?
It's working now.
This is the field that's just to the north of O'Neill. That's where the current development's going in right now, right?
Correct.
The manufactured home development?
Yeah, the Spanish Trails, and then the post office is just to the west there as well.
I just want to say, I drove by this today. I mean, I'm familiar with the area. I grew up a couple blocks away from there, actually. Great use for this site, and it checks, I like how you went through and checked all the box, you know, a lot of our goals that we're trying to make.
It's good infill.
You know, infill, affordable, or workforce housing, you know, multifamily residence, and it's a good fit in that area, so.
It's buffered by a lot of business.
And we still have the backstop, it still has to be approved for a major site plan, so we're not just giving a blanket approval of whatever they want to do there tonight. So I think it's great, and thanks for laying that out.
Anybody else have any comments? All right, thank you.
Councilmember Powell, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that the R3 is really appropriate. You're going to get less water use, less people have lawns in that than single house. And so when water's an issue, I think that's a good, that's a good product to have available.
Yeah, I think staff concurs. I think this is a really good infill site for this particular use.
All right, okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to the public and anyone who would like to comment on this particular project. Now's your chance to come forward. Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.409, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from single-family residential to multifamily residential on approximately 8.86 acres of property generally located at 151 West O'Neill Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor, I move acceptance of ordinance number 1178.409 as it's presented. And as I say, I think it's, I think compatibility with the area that it's in, too. We've added that to things we look at on our planning, is compatibility. And I think it fits well that way.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item L2, similar situation.
Took the words out of my mouth. This is going to be a little deja vu for you, I think, so.
Just a smaller piece of dirt.
A little bit smaller, but really very similar in the proposal. Emmett Sukoi is requesting a zone change from single-family residential R1 to multifamily residential R3 for approximately 1.69 acres of land located at 1563 North Crane Street. You can see the location there, just west of Crane Street, south of Cottonwood there. It's in the west side of the town. Existing zoning is R1. Proposed is R3. You can see the other surrounding land uses as well. General plan is in our community corridor land use. Site is requested to be rezoned to create multifamily apartment complex. Project aims to address that growing and unmet need for multifamily residential. If the zone change is approved, all the permitted and/or conditional uses would be allowed and would be required to obtain that major site plan or a conditional use permit if required. So this is a good opportunity to provide workforce housing in an infill site near the manufacturing industrial areas of the city, as well as add new development to the west side neighborhoods. Again, I can truncate this a little bit. We review it in regards to conformance with the general plan. The action is consistent with the city's general plan. Area is also in the Phase 1, primary growth area. The requested zoning of multifamily is an appropriate zoning district in the community center land use category. It meets the same two goals as the previous presentation, where it encourages a variety of neighborhood design and development patterns. Goal H5 also says encourage higher density residential projects in the community corridor areas. Second one, the rezoning conformance to the general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities within the range of identified uses. Community center category allows for a density between four and 20 units per acre. At 1.69 acres, the site could accommodate between seven and 34 dwelling units, depending on the unit size, number of bedrooms, and the number of stories. The proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. So this zone change will allow the owner to develop and utilize the property for a new multifamily apartment complex, again, a product that the city's determined to be in need of. If the zone change is denied, again, the maximum amount of units that could go on that 1.69 acres would be limited to the five due to the ADWR and cause requirements. Again, public hearing, notification requirements were matter exceeded, and we did not receive comments in regards to this. So Planning Commission on a 7-0 vote recommend the city council approve the zone change request, DSA 2100077, from single-family residential R1 to multifamily residential R3 with the following conditions. The second one is our standard right-of-way condition, again. And then the first one, we did, we are going to require that they provide a pedestrian access sidewalk connecting to the existing trail corridor to the south to be implemented at time of major site plan submittal. You can kind of see we've got an existing trail system just to the south, so that's why we added that condition, just to kind of encourage trails and open space for the project. Can I answer any questions in regards to this one?
Bob?
Is there a small commercial building on that property?
I think it's been, the only, I think it's been removed, and there is a pad on that building, but I don't think there's any structure on it.
Oh, okay. Used to be, I think it used to be an electrical contractor, but I didn't know it was gone.
I just thought it was a house. I just know that there's a foundation there.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a comment, and the only question I had in my mind about this was a pedestrian walkway, and I know that in the planning and zoning minutes, it was, you know, taken care of as far as our regional trails plan, so I'm glad that we did include that, so thank you.
I have a question. It could, I mean, technically, if it's R3, they could go three, four stories, but would the design, when they get to the design phase, is that something that you all would, you know, that the planning and zoning would probably look at?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, so that it's compatible with the neighborhood?
I think the maximum height's 35 in the zone district, so it could go three stories, but we would look at, we'd certainly look at compatibility with the surrounding uses and most likely not encourage balconies facing into any of the other residential. There is a small surrounding, basically easement or dedication that's not owned by it. You can kind of see it on the graphic there. So there is a built-in buffer essentially for the site, but we'll certainly take a look at it a little closer when the site plan comes in.
Any other comments from over here? Anyone? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Gloria, then I will entertain.
There it is, a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing. Got me. As this is a public hearing, I'm going to open the floor to item L2, and allow anyone from the public to address the council at this time. Okay, I want to close the public hearing, and then now I will call for an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.410, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from single-family residential to multifamily residential on approximately 1.69 acres of property generally located at 1563 North Crane Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval, ordinance number 1178.410 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, one more here, L3, another public hearing, and approval of ordinance number Did Paul make you go, "Guys, wear jackets tonight"?
Appreciate the teamwork.
Looks good.
I don't know who sent out the memo.
They got a dress code now, huh?
Paul's getting you guys to step it up, that's good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this also is a zone change request. It's being proposed to accommodate a proposed religious institution for the Seventh Day Adventist. It's a zone change request from Urban Ranch to R1, which is the single-family residential zone district. The, I apologize for the typo. The request is by Chuck Wright with the W of Pinell Design Group, on behalf of the Arizona Conference Corporation, to develop 2460 North Colorado into a new church site. It's a 2.27-acre site, but as you see on the screen... It's a 2.27 acre site, but as you see on the screen, the property sits in two different zone districts. It's Urban Ranch on the northerly parcel, and then there's two parcels to the south, which are currently zoned R1. The request would zone change it entirely into R1. Both the Urban Ranch zone and the R1 zone allows religious institutions with the approval of a conditional use, but this request would place it into one zone district to help accommodate development seamlessly. Church uses, as I mentioned, would be subject to the approval of a conditional use permit by Planning Commission as well as a major site plan. This is just an excerpt of the site plan, which Planning Commission considered, showing that the proposed church can be accommodated on this site. As you notice, it's surrounded to the north, east, and south by a drainage area, which is owned by the city of Casa Grande, and it served as drainage retention for the Mountain View Ranch neighborhood. But this parcel itself sits higher up above that retention area, and it was an outlier parcel that was never ultimately incorporated into the Mountain View Ranch development. It would be the only development on the east side of Colorado, north of Rodeo, that would have access to Colorado. All the other development to the north of it gets its access from internal streets to the east. When looking at zone changes, staff considers compliance with the general plan as the primary review criteria. This area is within the neighborhood's land use designation of the 2030 general plan, which does accommodate R1 zoning as well as religious institutions. A quote from the general plan states, "Thoughtfully placed non-residential uses, offering neighborhood level amenities and services, such as religious institutions, that serve as a complementary use to enhance neighborhoods integrated into the fabric of the community." So number one, the action is considered to be consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and applicable elements. Specifically, goal N3 talks about minimizing land use conflicts by requiring physical separations such as fences, berms, parks, or landscape areas. As I pointed out to you on the other slide, it sort of has an inherent buffer of that drainage retention on three sides, and then Colorado, which is an already dedicated collector street, serves as a formidable barrier between that and the single-family residential development to the west. This graphic sort of helps illustrate that, too, in that their site plan is proposing landscaping around the perimeter of the site for adequate buffering to help mitigate the use-to-use compatibility. Another goal is to direct growth to areas that provide for the most sustainable, efficient, and cost-effective use of infrastructure. This is a really good site to develop on because it is served by existing infrastructure. There doesn't need to be much added in the way of utilities. However, at the time of the development, Colorado Street will be widened. The necessary dedication has already occurred, however. Another criteria to look at is that the rezoning conforms to the general plan if the proposed uses, densities, or intensities are within the range of identified uses of the general plan. As I mentioned, R1 is considered compatible with the neighborhood's land use designation. There's other zone districts that could have been requested here, such as R2 or R3, which could yield up to 50 apartments on that site. However, R1 is the most appropriate zone district to request because firstly, what's driving this zone change is not really to develop it as a single-family residential development, but rather as a religious institution. But should that site ultimately not develop as a church, R1 is the most compatible with the surrounding uses. The proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. This is considered an appropriate development here as a non-residential use because, as I mentioned, there's no directly abutting single-family residential land use along the east side of Colorado, north of Rodeo, and so an institutional use is the most appropriate because it limits the number of driveways on that side of the street, et cetera. Regarding the public notification process, we did receive some comments that were incorporated into the Planning Commission staff report and were taken into consideration. Planning Commission did consider this at its July 1, 2021 meeting, and they unanimously recommended that city council, they recommend, recommended that you approve this zone change from Urban Ranch to R1. And that concludes my portion of the presentation.
There used to be a horse arena at the back part of that.
Donna?
The only question I had, and forgive me, I, in reading the minutes and stuff from P&amp;Z, the only thing that I noticed in here was there was no talk, I believe, of a sidewalk in front of the church, and there was concern about people parking on the roadway, and there was, you know, they, somebody had mentioned about, you know, no parking. Was that discussed at all, gentlemen? I don't remember seeing sidewalks discussed.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McBride, the situation is that currently there's no curb, gutter, or sidewalks. There's a lot of parking that occurs along that side of the street and probably partially into the property, and people parking there are probably doing such to go to the park. When the site develops, they will be required to put in half-street improvements, including curb, gutter, and sidewalk. The problem is, is since Colorado is a collector's street, it's actually not designed to have parallel parking. So really, the nature of the concern is these cars, which had been parking there, will no longer be able to park there. And that is a concern because it is a park, and we do wanna be able to provide areas for people to locate their vehicles. However, this is by and large designed to be a neighborhood park, and so the idea is that people from the surrounding neighborhood should access it, which they can by foot. At some point, if it's determined that the demand calls for a parking area, ultimately we would have to look at that as some sort of city project because it is city-owned property to be able to accommodate parking facilities.
And I know when I drove by there this weekend, there's already a fencing up, so they can't park there anyway right now if they're using the park. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I did have one other, I was reading in the minutes about the traffic, but that was determined that it wasn't gonna be that much of an impact on the surrounding neighborhoods.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, you're correct. And in fact, since he will be making improvements to Colorado Street, it will help address some of that concern about the traffic. But churches are generally seen to be a good complementary use to single-family because their peak travel times are converse with when the peak travel times of the single-family neighborhood occur.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the floor to the public. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on this matter, number L3? All right, seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing and call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.274.1, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to single-family residential on approximately 1.34 acres of property generally located at east of Colorado Street and north of Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.274.1 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, that is the most of our business tonight. One last item on the agenda is our reports. So I'm gonna start with you, Donna. You wanna go first?
All righty. Just a reminder, the mayor's reading program is looking for volunteers, and the mayor and I are gonna be working on a little skit that's being taped this week, so it'll be interesting. I did attend the chamber after hours this week. I'm really encouraged by the number of people getting back out and the small businesses, so I was encouraged that seems, things seem to be back to normal, but people are being careful. And then just Dorothy Powell Center reopened today, and I thought of Mr. Powell, and I'm really excited to see that the meals are being served there and activities are going to be starting back up. So that's all I have.
Matthew?
Thank you. Not much today, except for been doing a lot of planning and work on the youth commission retreat coming up this Saturday at, all day long, at the, at the rec center, and I wanted to give a special thank you to Gloria and her staff for helping put together some little welcome goodie bags for the commission, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Bob?
Yes, sir. Attended the CAG meeting last week, and there were a couple of things that were interesting for us. One is on the legislative update. It was stated that 50 million at the state level of surplus funds was approved and dedicated towards I-10 widening, and I clarified if that was in addition to the money that had already been slotted for the bridge widening, and I was told yes it is. So I don't know how much that is towards the total project, how much it accounts for, but it's good news, you know, that's.
Every little bit helps.
Exactly. Also, CAG and Sun Corridor will be sponsoring the, can't remember the exact name of it, Traffic Planning Conference in October. They said they would be sending out invitations soon, so I hope to attend that as well. Also, wanted to send out condolences to the family of Mike Beers. Mike passed away July 20th. He was a long time, I don't know how many years, but city attorney when I first started on the department. I know he, he.
David Goffler.
Oh, yeah. He headed up the Public Defender's Office in Florence, and then for, for a time, I believe, he was a judge pro tem for the city, so Mike will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Powell?
Well, I, my grandchildren, granddaughters, my little granddaughters woke up about four, five, six days ago and saw something they'd never seen before. They went outside, and it was wet, and they couldn't understand they'd never seen rain before, so. It's, it's really good for anybody in agriculture or whatever else, or people with lawns, getting your, getting it watered, and hopefully we have some more rain coming before it's all over with, but this is the biggest rain that I can remember in quite a long time.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
It's been a nice two weeks. The weather's been really good, but hopefully people have survived the rain. I know I had a leak in my house, so I've heard plenty of people that have had leaks and damage with trees and roofs and everything, so they're getting it together, hopefully. I wanted just a couple of things. I, you probably remember a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned Deputy Chief Leos taking a proactive approach to some of the undocumented immigrants coming across, and the Border Patrol did release, they had orders to release some of these documents, and some of them came into our city, and so I was happy to see that, you know, because of his persistency and proactive approach, and with the Faith Alliance, we had two, a mother and a child come through Friday, and then there was approximately 30 people that came on Saturday, and because of, you know, the collaboration, the LDS church was really good and did offer to transport many of those people up to the rescue committee facility in Phoenix. They said that they'll accept, you know, as many people as long as we can get people up there. So we had this plan in place. We didn't know when it was gonna happen, and it did happen this weekend. So we know, and Chief Leos is reminding us that we definitely need more people, so if there's volunteer organizations out there, church organizations that can get on the list to, if we have more people come through, we might need more people to help transport people up to Phoenix, and then they're working with them for their, you know, with their paperwork and everything. So again, I wanna thank Deputy Chief Leos and the Police Department because they have really taken a proactive approach and have got a lot of people involved, the Homeless Coalition, as well as the Faith Alliance, and we were able to take care of it before. So, yeah, I think that's it for me today.
All right. Jeff?
I don't have anything.
Okay, very easy. Well, I did wanna hit a little bit on COVID-19 and infections and everything that's going on right now. There's a lot of information out there and a lot of conflicting information in terms of, of masking up and all the infections and whatnot. Again, our position, the city's position, is that we, we ask that anybody who is not vaccinated to wear a mask, especially when you're in our, in the public and in our buildings, respect those people who have been vaccinated, and please try and protect everybody. And so the infection rates are on the rise in the state. There were 1,800 new cases reported today. We've been at, we had last week, I think, a couple of days, it hit 2,000. So that's not quite back where we were in January, so from that perspective, if you remember back in January, the state was hitting 12,000 a day. So, you know, in retrospect, 2,200 last Thursday, Friday is a lot, but it's not where we were. So I'm hoping that people will continue to get vaccinated, and again, we ask that if you aren't vaccinated, to please wear a mask in, in public and get vaccinated. I mean, it's, that's the best thing you can do. So just to give you a heads up, the county had no deaths reported yesterday, six new cases. So Pinellas County is a little bit less than, I think Maricopa County is the one bringing in a lot of the numbers. They're, they're the ones that they had, well, they're, they're over half a million infections, so that's over half the states at 935, so, 931. So of course, that's where most of our population resides, so. It's just 85122, we're, we're at about 43% vaccinated, about 23,000 people have been vaccinated. The state is sitting at about 52, and the county's at 37. So the county's not doing as well as the state. Infection rates are 9.7 for the state and 10% for the county, and I can't get them for 85122, so. But just encourage everybody, please be safe, please continue to wear masks if you, if you feel unsafe. And then, of course, it's up to our individual businesses. They can make that decision on their own, and that's pretty much what we're gonna be at here for, for a little while, anyway. Unless the numbers really spike, and then we may have to take some additional actions, but I'm hoping not to have to do that, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. One interesting thing, and I don't, the public probably doesn't really know or really care about this, but it's a big deal for the city of Casa Grande. We actually were approved for our 5307 Federal Transportation Authority accreditation. Actually, it's a credential, credentializing process that allows us to actually receive money directly from the feds for transportation. We don't have to go through ADOT anymore, and then they take 25% off the top, so now we can take 100% of the money and put it into a road instead of having to pay somebody to administer it for us, so that's a good thing. And Union Pacific Underpass Project, you, that's the, that's Florence Avenue as it passes underneath the Union Pacific and heads over to the west side of our city. Ellison Mills has said they're gonna start the project on August 16th, so look for that to begin. It's a painting, landscaping, architectural kind of project. It really will hopefully bring a little pride for. for, for our city. I know Gloria's been working on this for at least two years.
Ten years.
Oh, ten years.
[laughing]
Well, actively for the last two, I know. And, uh, so it's, it's a, it's a great project. Hopefully, we'll see it completed by October, maybe early November. So keep an eye out for that, and if, if you don't want to be delayed, don't go that way, because I'm sure there'll be some delays on, on Florence. Uh, Community Services is going to be hosting the first-ever, uh, Youth Sports Activities Expo. So this is a really big deal. It's going to give parents an opportunity, parents and organizations, an opportunity to really talk about and get together on youth sports and activ- activities on Saturday, August 21st, at the Community Rec Center. Um, do we have a start time on this yet, Larry?
Yes.
It's on the flyer, but I've got the flyer here.
I think it's like from nine to eleven.
It is, nine, nine to eleven. I have the flyer here, sorry. Should have looked myself. So we have nine to eleven, uh, Community Recreation Center. It'll be, uh, helping provide information on youth and family resources. It's a, it's a one-stop shop for information in dance classes, youth sports, childcare, uh, tutoring, and more. So it's, it's really, it could, should be an interesting event, so I'd encourage you to, um, to attend. And then also, just to kind of, um, a real monumentous, uh, event for Lucid this last week. They went public on Monday, the 23rd of July. Um, I, I know that's probably a snoozer for most people, but it's a big deal. It's, it, it, um, they basically written a check for four-point-five billion dollars, uh, to, to put into their expansion projects, which, uh, they are moving forward on. They've actually combined some of their Phase Three into Phase Two now, uh, and the phase, this Phase Two is going to be two-point-seven million square feet. So what's out there today is one million, so two, three times that now out there, and, uh, I talked to Mike Boyke today. They have officially hired a thousand Arizona people to work in the plant, and they expect at least another six-hundred by the end of the year. So huge impact for our community, huge impact for the state of Arizona, and, um, just, uh, more good things to come. If you're interested, it's on the New York Stock Exchange as LCID is the ticker, ticker name. Uh, let's see. That prob- that's probably enough. I know that, um, that the library's been doing a lot with, and working with our high school. I know that, uh, beginning, uh, Saturdays in August, and this, the first one is August 2nd, which was already? No. I know, or maybe that's just a date on this announcement. Anyway, so it's August 7th is the first one. It's 11 to 12. It's at Vista Grande Library, and they're going to be offering these STEAM Saturdays. So it's science-based, and participants will be doing, working on stuff like erupting lemon volcanoes and, uh, and creating, uh, chromatography flowers using coffee filters. So just to name a few of the exciting events that are going to be going on.
No potato guns.
No, no potato guns, Mr. Powell. Uh, but, but they're going to make elephant toothpaste.
There you go.
Okay, all right. So, some fun stuff, uh, starting, starting, uh, the 7th, right? 7th, and I said 7th, uh, of August, uh, from 11 to 12 at Vista Grande Library. Just to name a few things that, that are going on in the city. Lots of good stuff, lots of, uh, exciting information and, and happenings, so I hope everybody is, uh, prepared as traffic gets worse. Anybody else have any other comments? Okay. All right, seeing none, then I will adjourn tonight.